All right. Good evening, everyone. I, uh, oh, call the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for Wednesday, November 17th, to order. Lots of things to think about in the world. We're going into the holiday season, but whatever your thoughts are, we'll have a moment of silence to think about those. Thank you. Alderman Doorman, if you'd be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Alderman Doorman. And now we have a, um, a little difference in the agenda. As you see, we have a new member here, Mr. Derek Cornet. So I'm gonna swear him in so as if everybody sees he's officially seated. But just for everybody, uh, on January 5th, when the whole council is back starting the new term, we'll have quite the ceremonial event, as we did last time, national anthem, color guard, uh, Supreme Court Justice swearing us all. And so we'll do that with families and everything, but I'm just doing this with him. So we're, we're, we're official, so.
Mr. Cornet? So I, and state your name.
I, Derek Cornet.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of Seventh Ward Alderman.
Discharge the duties of Seventh Ward Alderman.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations, Seventh Ward Alderman.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Condon. All right, Brian, now call the roll with our new Seventh Ward Alderman.
Dunn.
Here.
Doorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Grip.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Cornet.
Here.
Dickman.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good even- good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. Again, like to welcome everybody here in attendance and anyone who's viewing our meeting on any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and everyone throughout the region. We are certainly happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire I know we all have, uh, to make Davenport an even greater place for everyone, especially for the folks in here. Uh, if you have a cellphone, if you'd be kind enough to put it on silent, um, or turn it off simply because it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking or engaging. Um, if you wish to address the council on an agenda item, please come to the podium, the microphone's above you. Uh, please give your name, ward or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. We ask that please keep your remarks to five minutes, and we'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator Ms. Spiegel is entering updates for us this evening.
Just a reminder that this time of year, our meeting schedule goes a little differently. So the City Council meeting will be held next Tuesday evening here in council chambers. Uh, and then customarily in December, we limit the meetings to one cycle. So we will have, uh, the Committee of the Whole on December 1st and the last City Council meeting of the year on December 8th.
Roger that. Thank you for that. So next Tuesday for the people, um, that are interested. All right, we have three public hearings this evening, uh, one in Public Works and two in Finance. So the first one, Public Works, Alderman Dunn, Alder- Alderman Dunn and Alderman Doorman. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Division Street, 76th Street to Research Parkway Improvement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign, and this public hearing is closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. The next area is Finance. Alderman Condon and our new Alderman Cornet will, uh, take care of this public here. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the first public hearing on the ordinance amending Chapter 2.04 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled Precincts and Wards to Establish Precinct and Ward Boundaries Based Upon the 2020 Census. Uh, is there anyone from the public wishing to address this hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. So a motion and a second. All in favor? All, sorry, all opposed? I open the second public hearing for the purpose of amending the North Urban Renewal Plan. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. So a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And close the public hearing. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor, McCondon. Next area is Petition and Communications. I'll just make, uh, one, um, Friday at 6:00 PM. We've been kind enough to get a wonderful tree donated to us, so we're gonna start a tradition here where we have a city Christmas tree. Um, and it's currently up, being worked to be lit on Friday in Kaiser Sauton Square. So, um, another new addition to all the different things we do. Um, and, uh, it came together shortly. I wanna thank Tiffany Thorne Dyke, Mallory Merritt, and a whole bunch of other people, uh, that had to go get the tree. And our good friend who comes to council all the time donated the tree, um, and put it up in a short period of time, and we'll, we'll keep improving on some of the winter activities we do down here with, uh, and now we'll have a Christmas tree. So if you're so inclined, 6 o'clock, Kaiser Sauton Square, tree lighting, kinda little start off the festival, uh, season. So I see Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to say a quick thank you to Chris Ales, who took, uh, Third Ward, um, residents and friends on a great tour of the Call Building on Saturday as our Third Ward meeting. Um, it is so exciting to see what's happening in this downtown landmark. Gorgeous things, uh, under drop ceilings being repaired, um, a beautiful theater. I'm reminded again how beautiful the Capitol Theater is, um, and just what's happening throughout that building. Um, it will be a wonderful, um, um, I think it's, um, 60-plus, um, moderate income units, um, available in the spring, um, and very beautiful location and just a fantastic job of bringing this thing back to, to great beauty. So, um, I'm sure everybody's gonna look forward to seeing it when it's done, but Chris was very gracious. His contractor was terrified. Nobody, um, you know, tripped on anything. We got to see the plaster work that was being, the, they're recreating, things like that. So, um, in any case, I'm sure everybody will enjoy it, um, you know, once it's open, but I wanted to thank him for being so gracious. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanna thank the Parks Department for putting up the Christmas lights once again at the beautiful Riverview Park. You know, the historic Washington Street neighborhood, 20 years ago raised funds for Christmas lights, landscaping, gazebos, birdhouses. You know, sadly, the park's been closed for over four months. And my hope is with the weather cold, maybe the city will reopen the park for cars so they can come in, enjoy the view, maybe have a little lunch, and look at the Christmas lights. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move on to action items for discussion. We have four items, community, community development, public safety, public works and finance. Uh, community development will be discussed by Alderman Grip and Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Grip, please.
All right. I open the discussion for community development this evening. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance for case ORD 21-02, being the request of the city of Davenport to amend various sections of Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, entitled zoning by amending various subsections thereto. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is also a third consideration ordinance for case REZ 21-04, being the request of the city of Davenport to rezone 143 acres, more or less, of property located near 320 West Kimberly Road, generally being bound by Northwest Boulevard, Kimberly Road, Brady Street, East 42nd Street, Welcome Way, and the north lot line of North Park Mall from C3 General Commercial to CC City Center District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will also move on. Item number three is a resolution approving case F21-11, being the request of Origin Design on behalf of Russell Construction for a final plat of Russell Fry Armstrong Industrial Park, first edition, for a four-lot subdivision on 95 acres located at 8730 Northwest Boulevard. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. And item number four is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of a portion of 601 East Blackhawk Trail to Ethod Properties LLC. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Uh, Craig Herman. I live at 2812 East Pleasant Street in Davenport. Um, own Herman Farms, Inc., that's based in Eldridge, Iowa. Um, I just wanted to comment that, um, I came to the city in August of 17 to try to buy that property. They weren't ready to sell yet because of some railroad, uh, things that were going on, so we entered into a license contract. Expecting to buy at some point, I invested, you know, rock. It was a weed patch when we obtained it and cleaned it all up, invested a lot in rock, added utility service and cleanup. Um, over the last four years, with all that, you know, I have just in lease alone $50,000 tied up, and then, you know, with rock and other stuff, you know, miscellaneous, 15 grand probably. My intention was always to buy the property. You know, I approached the city several times. They weren't ready, they weren't ready. Well, I seen there was an offer pending roughly a month ago. I submitted an offer. It was $18,400 higher than the previous offer, and I decided to table it and take sealed offers. So I went ahead and submitted a sealed offer of, uh, $442,500, and I noticed that, uh, the higher offer that you're recommended to accept is about $6,500 higher than what I have. I'm already set up at the, at the property. I'm operating out of there. It would be hardship for me, uh, to move my operation. So, um, so again, over $6,500 last time was $18,000. And please remember, if I didn't submit that last offer the first time a month ago, you would've been accepting $120,000 less. So because of that, because of me, you know, right now you're having an offer of $120,000 more roughly. And, uh, and now, and last time I was $18,000 more. Now I'm $6,500 less roughly. And, uh, I just really, really pers- uh, ask you to, um, consider my offer for $6,500 and, uh, $442,500. Do you have any questions for me?
We'll see if there's any more, uh, public comment, and then when we come to councils with comment, if there's any questions for you, we'll, we'll ask you to come back up.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? All right, seeing no one, we'll go to, uh, council with comment. Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks to Mr. Chairman. Who did you put the, your offering with from the city?
Sir. Hey, Mr. Chairman, if you could have him come up here so he's on, yep.
Yes, the, the offer is submitted to Bruce Berger.
And when was that?
The most recent one was, uh, Monday at noon, or a week ago, Monday at noon, was the most.
And the first one was?
I'd have to look that up. I think it was, no, it was like October 18th, I believe. Of this year.
All right. Thanks.
So in less than 30 days, 100, roughly $120,000 increase.
Yeah, I think the gentleman's got a compelling case here, so... I wanna know, as we move forward with this, I know Tom isn't here. Do we have someone from staff?
Yep. Can we, can we just, uh, have somebody from staff talk about how we got here, the process that we went through, um, stemming from the Committee of the Whole Meeting, uh, last cycle?
Sure. Uh, Bruce Berger, Community and Economic Development. So, um, we brought forward, uh, an offer that was, um, from Ethod LLC, um, at the, what was it, two Committee of the Holes ago, I guess it would've been, um, so roughly a month ago, and, um, in the process of holding the public hearing, as, uh, Mr. Herman mentioned, um, he submitted a, a competing offer at the time. And so I think at the, just kinda, uh, filling in the blanks, what happened then at the Committee of the Whole Meeting roughly a month ago was that, well, we now have two competing offers. Really, the fair thing to do would be to have a sealed bid process. So staff did that, um, and the bids were due a week ago, Monday at noon, and we indeed received two bids, um, and brought the, the, uh, more advantageous one to the city forward.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I think I still have the floor. Bruce? So this gentleman had a lease agreement on the property since 2017? Were you aware of that?
Mm-hmm. It's an annual, uh, arrangement.
And someone came and addressed you about purchasing the property? You would think good practices would've been reaching out to, uh, the gentleman that has the lease since 2017 and has vested money in it, you know, before staff brought this forward.
Didn't approach me, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Dunn?
Thank you. I really kinda feel sorry for the guy, but we did send this out as a process. Right, correct? And there's really not a whole lot we can do, is there?
So to clarify, at least in my time here, we've gotten people interested in this property on and off through the years, and including the city of Eldridge at one point. We received an offer when we no longer needed it for the railroad purposes after all the construction was done. Uh, this isn't like a me selling a house, private transaction. We have to follow all of the real estate transaction guidelines as they're written in law. So the public notice, the sign on the property, all that kinda thing, um, to dispose of public assets. So we, we followed that process. We didn't list it with a Realtor. We didn't say the city is actively seeking to sell this property. We did not do that.
And we, as the council, asked for that process?
Law dictates that process.
Right. I mean, we sent it back off as a sealed bid. Um, but we made that decision. Thank you.
All right. Seeing nobody else, I'll just make a brief comment that, uh, I understand, uh, the, the frustration on Mr. Herman's part and that he's, he's been leasing there. Um, we did discuss this as a council last cycle and thought the most fair way to deal with this was a sealed bid process. It did, uh, benefit the taxpayers of Davenport in getting a higher, uh, amount for the property. So, uh, taxpayers are benefiting in that way. I think the, the process was, was fair, and we gave everybody an opportu- everybody who had an interest in the property an opportunity to buy it. Um, still understand why, uh, the gentleman leasing the property currently would, uh, would be upset about it, but I think the process was fair. We will keep this on, uh, discussion, and we will vote on it next week. So, uh, with that, I would ask Alderwoman Lee to please set our agenda.
I move that Items 1, 2, and 3 be placed on the consent agenda and Item 4 be placed on the discussion agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that concludes community development this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Um, the next area is public safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman, um, and we'll help you with that. We'll do public safety. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item one on the public safety agenda is a third consideration ordinance amending Schedule 7 of Chapter 10.96 entitled No Parking by Adding Lewis Rich Court Along Both Sides From West Lake Boulevard East to Its Terminus. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, third consideration ordinance amending Schedule 7 of Chapter 10.96 entitled No Parking by Adding Villa Drive Along Both Sides From Villa Court South 300 Feet. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number three, third consideration ordinance amending Schedules 14 and 15 of Chapter 10.96 by changing Marquette Street at 12th Street from pedestrian traffic signals to intersection traffic signals. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number four, second consideration ordinance amending Schedule 17 of Chapter 10.96 entitled No Stopping, Standing, or Parking by Adding 54th Street Along the South Side From Pine Street West 550 Feet Between Hours of 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM on School Days. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number five, motion approving the following noise variance requests for an event on the listed dates and times. Freight, Freight House Farmers Market, Chris Kindle Mart Market, 421 West River Drive, 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Friday, December 3rd, 2021, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Saturday, December 4th, 2021, and 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Sunday, December 5th, 2021, outdoor music band, over 50 DBA. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. And last is motion approving beer and liquor license applications. Um, I'll read the new license, new owner temporary permit, temporary outdoor area location transfer, which is, um, Chris Kindle Market QC 421 West River Drive, temporary outdoor event, December 1st through December 4th, license type beer/wine. And then listed are the annual license renewals, uh, for your, for your view. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, I would ask one of my colleagues to please set the agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed, same. All opposed, same sign? Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. The next area, third area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alder, and Doorman will lead that discussion. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have seven items to see the public works. Item number one is a second consideration of an ordinance adding Chapter 13.40 to the Davenport Municipal Code entitled Public Water Supply Well Protection. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel?
Rick, I, I'd like to ask some questions.
Yeah, hang, hang, hang on. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman, um, Dunn. I'm sorry, your D's over there. Um, I'm so sorry. Um, yeah, I, um, I know that, uh, we had talked about last week, um, uh, some sort of amendment to this, and I, I really feel strongly that we should. Um, it, it's my understanding that, um, this ordinance, um, that, that this plan is, is, is in the future. It's, it's sort of, it's not, um, the idea of more than one well, which is the only thing we talked about, which was a non-potable well that now has become a potable well, first of all. And then, um, just the fact that this is, um, potentially the way our, what the water company might go, but it may not be. I think that's a bad way, a really bad way to govern, um, if it is, if, if it's sort of a proposed future plan. Um, I, I have all sorts of questions, um, that aren't answered, um, and I understand that the, that Iowa American Water was not the company that brought this first, that it came, it started as the Genesis Project, and now it's, it, it's evolved, but that makes it even more complicated. You know, I have questions about this that go from, um, uh, you know, public hearings to how does the, how do these wells, if they're built at all, how do they get to the plant down on the river? Um, does, do they get down to the plant on the river? What does that do to our infrastructure? Um, you know, how does the water from them get there? It, uh, it just brings up so many questions that, um, it seems like the wrong time to be, uh, agreeing to an ordinance that is all speculation in a sense, or mostly speculation with the, um, with the, um, exception being the first well. So I, I really can't support this, and I am, it, and I know we're in the second consideration, but we really need that amendment. So, um, uh, I hope that we get that, um, and I'm gonna be, you know, I'll be asking for it, um, next week, um, if, you know, if somebody else doesn't step forward, because I, I don't, this is a huge change, and we have to recognize that and understand, and I think this council said that last week. I, I heard individual members, so I think I'm not, um, standing alone here, so just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee?
Uh, thank you very much. I, I have also a lot of questions. Uh, this is more than just an ordinance. The ordinance is critical because we do want, um, our potable water perfected with the terminus. However, this is a bigger question in my mind in that, that affects everyone in the city of Davenport, and that this is now turned into a system of wells for, it was stated for redundancy, but when the gentleman for, from the water company said, actually, it'll be cheaper because we won't have to treat the water as much. So I'm wondering if we're looking at a new water system potentially, um, the water company, where the Mississippi River might become the, the redundancy, because they would be costing and doing it from wells. And we don't know enough information at all about this project. And if we are passing an ordinance for this project, uh, of a series of wells all over Davenport and possibly elsewhere in other cities, we need to look at this as a system itself, and that the ordinance is part of this project, but it is not the driver, and we need to be looking at the, the whole system. Uh, where, what are the criteria for where they would choose to put wells? How does it relate to aquifers and recharge? Where would pump stations go? Would there need to be any piping? Uh, how would we manage noise? Um, how, how would the well connections relate to the piping? What kind of construction is involved in that? Because it now turned into potable water. Um, are we looking at length of pipes? Are we looking at depth to aquifer? Are we talking where water, uh, uh, pipes already exist, where we already have infrastructure? Um, how would the pump stations look? How would the treatment facilities look? It says it's gonna be treatment. Are those gonna be on-site with the well or not? Um, how would we abate noise? What would the buildings look like that would be on-site? And, um, are there gonna be requests for other non-potable HTRs with the other hospitals, um, in the area? Uh, there, there's more to this than just the ordinance, and I would definitely like more information from the, um, the company before I'm willing to talk about any ordinance, because the ordinance may be amended, may need to be amended for more than just what we're talking about for it to come before City Council and have neighborhood hearing. So I'm not prepared to support this at this point of time either. Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Doorman?
Thank you. Um, just to, I guess, first clarify the, um, so I, Tom and I have had preliminary discussions about what an amendment would look like, and the amendment would be to, uh, be specific to just the Genesis. It would have a location boundary just for the one well that is in discussion, and that, and when Alderwoman Lee referred to the, the project, I would say that, um, the Genesis well is the project that Iowa American has right now, um, and it is one that we've, uh, vetted through the neighborhood and had, um, many multiple discussions with them about. Um, so that's the, um, the, the project, you can say, and that's why we want to add an amendment to make this ordinance, uh, be, uh, location-specific, just related to that, um, one well. So then any potential new wells they add in Davenport, which would be more of a long-term strategic plan that the water company has, um, they would need to go through a new process, um, to then add their, re-change this ordinance to add in a new location. Um, and some preliminary discussions I've, I've had with Tom about this, uh, even is working in, uh, language that says if they wanna add a new location, they have to have a, a public hearing process like we would have, uh, with city zoning requests and other things like that. So before we even take it to, uh, that kinda next level of changing this ordinance, we would have would have to have the water company engage and work with the neighbors as well, wherever any future wells in Davenport may be. And so I do apologize for not having anything ready to go right now, but I should definitely have something, working with Tom and the rest of our legal staff, by next Wednesday that we can hopefully get a first draft circulated to everyone, and then we can actually make that motion next Wednesday for that consideration. But just to hopefully clarify any concerns that people may have right now, we really are, when it comes to this ordinance and the need of the water company to get their DNR permit, this is only related to the Genesis project and not any, any future wells that may be coming, or I guess that it would be the intent of having that amendment. And Alderman Lee, I would also suggest setting up a meeting with the, the water company. I know they'd be more than happy to do that, where you could ask a lot of those questions about maybe some more longer-term strategic plans that they would have, not related specifically to this, this one Genesis one, so.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman, for all your hard work with the neighbors. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I got a greater concern about the poor neighborhood and the impact they're going to have. You know, I've watched this process many, many times before. Things that are going to have a negative impact to neighborhoods, whether it's a street project or public works project, oftentimes, particularly with Genesis, you know, they get soft-soled to the neighborhood, and then the process starts and it becomes a very significant issues, bringing a bad impact to the neighborhood, particularly the drilling on this. I just don't understand why Genesis, who for the last 20 years has been impacting the neighborhood by building a bigger and bigger hospital, cannot move a well away from the neighborhood and pipe in the water. I know it's a cost issue, but it's also, as we talk so often at City Hall, being a good neighbor. So you've met with the neighbors, and I'm sure as this was discussed, you know, the neighbors all want to be good neighbors, and they are good neighbors. The people I'm concerned about is Genesis and their willingness to look out for that neighborhood. So, you know, this was discussed when they first came down, what, six, seven months ago? So my concern with the Genesis issue is the impact it's going to have on the neighborhood, and Alderman Dorman's not going to be around when the neighbors can't sleep at night because of the constant drilling for several months. So the cost of some piping to address this issue, I think, would be insignificant to the impact it's going to have on the neighborhood.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Mayor Mattson.
Thank you for letting me talk, Mr. Chair. So along with a couple of my colleagues here, I attended the neighborhood meeting at Genesis and Alderman Ambrose, the neighbors had the opportunity to ask all their questions, and there were some really good questions and some good participation. And at least for the Genesis one, and I agree with Alderman Dorman, they need something else for the future stuff, but for this one, I believe, and you guys correct me, their questions and answers were given, and they were happy. And the, the impact and how they're going to do it was explained both by Genesis and the water company and different other folks, and, and it was all worked out. So I'm totally cool with the Genesis project. Again, separate of that, moving forward, we need to have more discussion, but at least the neighbors that participated in the multiple discussions, and especially the last one, got their answers and were good with how this is going to proceed and how they're going to address the noise. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Dunn? I have two more questions if I can.
Sure.
Is it my turn? I can't see. You're underlayed.
Sure. You're up. Go ahead.
Okay. So I guess going back, after listening to Alderman Dorman, and going back to the bigger picture, when the gentleman from the water company spoke last time, he was talking about it being non-potable for Genesis and potable as the beginning of the strategic system. So I still have the question on, with this vote, with this ordinance only for Genesis, are we still setting up the beginning of a strategic system and not just for non-potable water for the Genesis HVAC system? And I would not want to see, since this is a strategic system that he says he's been working on since 2019, now, the company has been working on since 2019, that they, we would have an idea of where all the wells would be proposed, an idea, not the site, but an idea of the, the system that they're looking at. So I would not want to see this to be well-by-well ordinance modifications. I would like to see this ordinance address the Genesis well for non-potable water, for the HVAC system, and then we have, and with the modification for the neighborhood. And then we have another look at the system for potable water across the city of Davenport based on the process that the company started in 2019, on where those wells would be. I would not, I would want to see this as a system, and the HVAC, non-potable water be its own decision, and the potable water system be separate and be done in one ordinance, not well-by-well, but working with the neighborhoods as they come up, well-by-well. But we should not be in vote, voting like that as a council on the system. We should be voting on the system itself. Thank you.
So just, just for some clarification, my understanding is, is this well for Genesis is not solely for Genesis. Some of this water will be pumped right back into the system. Am I correct, Mr. Chair? He's giving me the thumbs up. So I hear that concern from my colleagues that this isn't just for Genesis, that it is actually going back into the system. So maybe, I'm going to let Alderman Dorman talk, but then maybe we ought to think about either table on this until we can get somebody from Iowa American or to answer all your questions, or that's just a suggestion, but.
Yeah, and I will say that right now, the plan is all the, all of the water coming out of this well will be treated on-site and will be going into the system. There's no, from everything they said, there's no deviation of some waters being pumped, pumped that's not being treated to go right into the HVAC system, and others is going into the system. It's going to all be treated as it comes up, but in a lesser fashion than what it takes to treat the river water. So that's why it can all be contained within a small building that isn't super-industrial. That after our neighborhood meeting, I will also like to point out that many of the neighbors who were in attendance were actually excited that they were now having water within their direct proximity, because if something was to happen to our main water plant, not only would Genesis be able to be sustained, now those neighbors that could be serviced off of this one well also now have a backup for their, their neighborhood as well. So that was a unintended victory that some of the neighbors had in this project as well. But the, the main concerns of the noise while drilling, that was the, the one large impact that's going to be seen to the, the neighborhood. Everything else, according to the water company, would just be an occasional delivery truck of some sort coming through to drop off any new chemicals that would need reloaded into the well for the treatment, and then having the, the building itself, which I've worked with the, the water company and asked multiple times and am hoping to get some sort of final plans on what that building will look like to make sure it fits in with the neighborhood so that the, the well is no longer, or wouldn't be an eyesore or would be a deterrent to the neighborhood. So when we talk about Genesis itself and this one specific project, which we will make an amendment for, to have the location base where they can't build any other well unless it was within this geographical area that this ordinance, after amended, would be impacting. We've had good response with the neighbors. We've worked through the process, and, and I would be okay with proceeding with that amendment, so it's specific to this one project. And later down the road, future councils can work with Iowa American to talk about any other location. A well may or may not be added to our community. So like I said, I'll work with Tom to make sure we have that amendment in front of you guys, so we can proceed with getting this amendment passed, so they can get their permit with the DNR, so they can then start the process of drilling the well this winter.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Not to drag this out any further, but the HVAC system is a closed-loop system, so it really shouldn't need any water unless it has a major leak, so. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you for letting me speak in. So I guess I'm completely confused now. So Genesis came to this council to talk about this project as a closed project, non-potable water well. Was, so I guess the neighborhood meeting was held that, where the neighbors were told Iowa American was involved, and that they might have access to this water? That happened after the meeting with the council? Is that, that's, Michael, that's, because otherwise, if the meeting with the neighbors happened before, the presentation this council had did not talk about that at all. That's what I'm getting more confused about. Thank you.
I can take that one.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so the, the entire project started with the EMA, and they approached Genesis to say, hey, we realize you're a critical asset, and you need a redundancy in your system for water. There's a grant out there that we could go seek in order to build this well for your system, and, and that was just for Genesis by itself. Then later down the road, once all of those wheels were already turning and everything was going with that, the water company came on board and realized that they could be a part of this project and that they could add a redundancy to their system. And so that's then where it now spread into this, this bigger redundancy that we now, the bigger scope of the project we see, where the well would then be tapped into Iowa American's system, where they could take it out into the neighborhood and other parts of town as well, not just Genesis. And then any future wells is purely a strategic point that any business should have a long-term strategic plan of how they're going to serve their customers in the future, and none of those are in concrete or have finalized plans or really know locations. Genesis is, that site is the only spot that they have current plans for. Anything else is all just a strategic, hope-to-have, long-term initiative.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for another opportunity. This sounds like it's really thought-out well. You know, the funding is a grant? Is it a government grant?
That I don't know.
Okay. So if the taxpayers are stepping up to the plate, and the taxpayers also pay for the water company, and the taxpayers also pay their healthcare bills, you would think to move the well away from a neighborhood would just be a good neighbor. So the more I hear, the more skeptical I am, because I've heard many bureaucrats and bureaucracies from the EPA to the DNR, you know, I'm very skeptical of what they say. You know, they have their agenda. So I'd be really concerned, and I am concerned about that neighborhood, because over the years, I've sat here and heard complaints often about the impact of the construction at the hospital, about the truck traffic, and I know it's a great neighborhood, and I know we like to support good neighbors and good neighborhoods. So, you know, just an observation for someone that's been around a while, this thing sounds like it's a typical bureaucratic pitch to the poor public.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've been concerned with, with the changing scope of this project as well. I wanted to first start off by thanking Alderman Dorman for all of his work on this. He's put a lot of effort into it. He knows the, the facts, and I think you're, you're leading this well. I appreciate it. If this is a one-well request, and we've gone through the, the neighborhood engagement and asked the questions and gone through the process, you know, I'm supportive of the one-well. And if, if this is a comprehensive plan where they want to put wells throughout the city of Davenport, then we need to put together a, a comprehensive plan with them, and it needs, it needs more than this one look. So, you know, if they wanted to do the one and then, and then broach the subject of a comprehensive plan, I'd be supportive of that, but thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Mattson.
Thanks. I just want to bring us back to where we started. This, I sit on the Emergency Management Agency Board, and this came through all the many last few challenges of our years. The EMA is constantly looking at ways to develop things in case other tragedies happen. One of the things that came out of that, and God forbid we lose our water plant, and what happens with the hospital? So it was identified the need, and that's where this came from, and that's what this project is to, to do, to in case we have a problem with our water, our hospital has a water source. So let's, and just my advice, let's keep that focus on this one. I agree with everybody else. Future, we need to have a heck of a lot more discussion on what we do in neighborhoods and all the points you guys made. But let's remember, that's the focus of this one, and I'd ask you, and the neighbors have been involved, and Alderman Dorman has orchestrated that well. So I appreciate that. So I would, I would ask you to, to do your amendment, but let's get this one through, and then we can move forward and, and address the other ones. That's just my last two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on, and on to a more exciting and hopefully less controversial issue here. Item number two is a resolution accepting the Mississippi River Flood Resiliency Plan as a guide for future flood mitigation actions. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please step forward.
All right. Good evening. Paul Rumler, CEO for the Quad Cities Chamber and Sixth Ward resident, wanted to, on behalf of the Quad Cities Chamber, representing the entire region's business community, speak in support of the flood resiliency plan. It's been a long time coming. Really appreciate the focus that this council has made on this, the staff, the consulting team. We think it's done an amazing job to prepare the city of Davenport and the Quad Cities for what we hope we don't have to deal with, which is another major flood, but we know that reality is, is what it is. What we like about this plan is that it helps promote additional access to our community. The entire nine-mile stretch of the riverfront is very important to us at the Quad Cities Chamber, and we respect the fact that you've incorporated a plan that addresses that in unique ways, and not a one-size-fits-all plan throughout the city, so we really appreciate that. We think it's important that you've maintained mobility in and around Davenport to make sure that at the highest flood stage possible, that people can still get to Davenport and through Davenport and all of the communities that, that are part of it. We also respect the fact that you've incorporated a very good plan for flood stage 26 protection, both structural and non-structural up to that, that stage. I think that we're well protected. We look forward to working alongside of you over the coming years to make this plan a reality, including advocating for funding at the state and federal level as needed. We want to be a partner to you. We appreciate the relationship that you've developed with us and incorporated our thoughts into your plan, as well as the colleagues that served on the Flood Task Force dating back to several years ago. There is a lot of ideas that came out of that, and some of us were a little suspicious as to whether or not any of those ideas were actually going to be put in writing, let alone adopted by City Council and, and actually implemented. So we really appreciate the fact, I'll speak on behalf of that group that I was a part of, that it's come to this stage. So I wanted to go on record and thank you for the great work, and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Paul.
Kyle Carter, Fifth Ward and Executive Director for Downtown Davenport Partnership. Paul said it very well, but I will reiterate that we should be very proud of this system, because that's what this is. I think we have some really- I think we had some really good conversations in our last few meetings, really coming to grips with the fact that this is multifaceted. It's balanced. It's the full picture, whether you live in the Sixth Ward, whether you spend downtown time or not. This will impact you. It will impact our region. It's absolutely critical that this get done. It'll take time. It'll take money, and we got to do it. I don't think there's a choice. The alternative is actually more expensive in the long run to try and ignore it. So congratulations on a job well done. You hired the right company, Public Works, and the staff did a wonderful job working with those experts at HR Green to come up with this. We've even worked with the Silver Jackets. So it's holistic. It's a it's going to take a team effort, and I'm just really proud to say that we were part of the generation who finally put together forward a complicated, challenging, but real plan that step by step can address this and systematically, slowly but surely, address these problems to the best of our ability to live with the Mississippi River, which we will be doing one way or the other forever. And to Paul's point about the 26 feet, the only piece I'd add is that we really need to make sure that the permanent infrastructure that we do build, both below and above ground, make sure that it can manage much more than what we've seen already at 22, 23. We know this plan is capable of that. Operationalizing and deploying elements that go above and beyond what maybe people see at the surface level. So congratulations on getting this far. Downtown Davenport Partnership has been very impressed with the work. We know the hardest part is in front of us still. So we look forward to working with you guys as the years go by and councils change and come and go. Please continue to keep this a priority at the top of the list. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Gill.
Hi, Dale Gilmore, Sixth Ward. I want you to understand the verbiage of this. Okay, resolution accepting. You're not adopting it. You're just merely accepting it. So you could actually say it's a resolution acknowledging the receipt of the flood resiliency plan as a guide. This isn't this isn't any doesn't put any force of any any performance to the city. It's just, okay, yeah, we've we got the plan. We paid for the plan. We got the plan, and now we're going to look at it. But it's not, again, you haven't you haven't adopted the plan. You've just simply acquired the plan or accepted the plan or received the plan. And again, it's the resiliency plan as a guide. So please remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll handle, Fourth Ward, also in the Tennessee. I have to acknowledge previous three speakers and staff, city council members and business leaders and all the citizens who participated in this plan. I think it's a wonderful document. There are things that I would like to perhaps have people consider. One, the I mean, I was looking at the most, I guess, monumental flood in this area recent years. Of course, the Cedar River flooding in 2008. Cedar Rapids and everyone downstream of them experienced an event. It was, I believe it's 12 feet over over flood. No, it was 19 feet over flood stage. And the 22 feet is seven feet over over our flood stage. And I have to dare say that if we were to experience something 19 feet over flood stage and were protected like we would be with this for seven feet, there'd be a lot of finger pointing. But that the devastation of that flood would be so severe that you'd say nothing, nothing could have been done to prevent it. They had $6 billion worth of damage, and the fixes that I see are maybe something $400 million, $500 million. In contrast, our most recent flood was, from what I hear, physical damage plus loss of business, a paltry $30 million, and we're talking about perhaps $160 million of fix. And I just want to say, council and the citizens are going to want to look at at that to make sure that the cost benefit analysis of this is not way out of whack. We certainly want to enjoy our riverfront. In fact, I think we need to make it so that when it's not during floods, you know, when it's not in a flood stage, that our riverfront and appreciation of our river is even greater than it currently is. Right now, when when the railroads raised the tracks, it did some terrible things to the view of pedestrians and motorists coming down River Drive. And I think we need to to look to see if there are opportunities to make our city even more beautiful and more accessible from the downtown area. If you look at Muscatine, I said that in the past. Muscatine had the fortunate fortunate they were set up so that their downtown is quite a bit higher and and they're they're not so directly threatened, and they don't have a fairly major street like River Drive separating them from their downtown from the river. And I think we need in the long run to look at taming our river and taming River Drive and make it so that we're not it's not totally totally conduit for traffic, but it becomes perhaps a area of pleasure and landscaped promenade for our citizens. And I've got some ideas on how to do that over the long run because it seems like as Americans, we look toward the short term and not the long term. And I want us to have it so that come the year 202001, we have looked back to this era of eight years in the past, and we say that we took the right steps. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council? Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Chair. So first, I mean, we have to say that this is a historic plan, a comprehensive flood plan in the city of Davenport that incorporates the entire riverfront from Bettendorf to Buffalo in stretches. It's also comprehensive in the sense that it addresses the underground flooding, the overtop over-the-top flooding, and then non-structural protection. So the mantra retreat and then floodproof and floodfight. So retreat from the floodway and the flood plain where it makes sense, floodproof where you decide to stay, and then floodfight where you need to. And this plan does that. It also gives us a phased roadmap and, you know, accept versus adopt is my least favorite argument in all of city business. But Mr. Gilmore's point is well taken. We don't commit future councils to spending money. What we have here is a plan and a roadmap to get there, and it starts with phase one. And that's what I like about it is phase one is enhance and fix what we have. And anything in phase one is an immediate ROI. A lot of it is underground flood protection. And what I think you'll see when we've completed phase one is you're going to be pretty impressed with the impact that the underground flood protection offers us before any future councils make the decision to move into phase two, which is over-the-top protection. But it's called in the plan transformational protection, right? This is over-the-top protection. This is flood floodwalls, barriers, berms, et cetera. It will transform the way our riverfront looks. And then, of course, phase three is if you if you decide to do any over-the-top protection, you have to figure out how to pump water back over the top. And so a lot of phase three is pump. The other thing I like about it is that it gives us permanent mitigation to 22 feet. So we don't have to do a lot of manual flood protection up to 22 feet. But then there are operational provisions after that to give us flood protect flood mitigation to to much higher than 22 feet. I really like that we address the non-structural portion of this. And my particular favorite here is the individual building mitigation cost share, which is saying if you own a building that's in the flood floodway or the flood plain and you want to protect yourself from the flood, we appreciate that and we'll be a partner with you and provide a cost share to make sure that your building is flood protected. And then, of course, the last thing, which is important, it's the reason why, one of the reasons why Davenport has never gotten to the point of having this comprehensive plan, which is we are a river city with a deeply held relationship with the Mississippi River. And this plan keeps the Mississippi River as the star attraction of our city, both recreationally and from a tourist perspective, but mostly for the people who live here in Davenport and live and love living in a river city and and want to go down to the riverfront and not see a 30-foot-tall berm, but see the great Mississippi River in their town. So I'm hoping that we will not only accept this, but immediately in the the next term begin to do phase one where we address the immediate ROI projects, underground flooding, that we will all start to see the immediate benefits of. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. You know, Davenport has been a national leader in flood management and doing it in a fiscally responsible way. Staff has been working on subsurface improvements and improvements to the water treatment plant for as long as I've been on the council. You know, we would be having this discussion of we didn't have a dike break at a record flood. Now, working with the Corps of Engineers, staff has made adjustments to the temporary dike where it may never have a break again. So the plan is a pretty solid plan, but the truth of the matter is, our Public Works staff has been addressing these issues for over 25 years, and they've been doing it without putting a financial burden on the good people of Davenport. So let's slow down. Let's do this in a fiscally responsible way. The temporary dike has been improved. We'll probably never see a fault. We know areas that have to be targeted, but let's this area that's impacted is probably 1% of our great city. So we have a lot of neighborhoods and business districts that need attention along with, you know, the river area. I've talked to people involved in Nanhut March, and they believe they should be all turned back into an extended Nanhut March for $150 million. Maybe that's possible. So staff has habitually, historically, done an incredible job in flood management, and I'm proud of staff for doing that. And every year, we continue to build and improve the system. You know, we invested hundreds of thousands of dollars for this study, and we've done a lot of studies throughout the city over the years. And there's a closet somewhere at City Hall that has these studies stacked up, so.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Jobin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think my toe still hurts from last time. I stubbed it with the semantics around accepting for the DDP master plan, so I won't touch that with a 10-foot pole this evening. Definitely am supportive of this plan and will vote yes easily next week. It was something that, as it evolved, it definitely changed my changed my opinion and my viewpoint. I had something way different in my head going into this. And to get a good roadmap like this, whereas Alderman Gripp, you know, we're not committing any future councils to spending any money, we'll continue to be fiscally conservative and look for how we can maintain access to our great downtown and riverfront and be cost-conscious to the taxpayers. I did ask a question last week, and I was hoping maybe we had the answer. I was just curious, how much have we spent on flood fighting over the past 20 years?
Nicole Biese in Public Works. So before we had our Work Order Management System, I can't give you great numbers from that. But for example, in 2020, where we would just manage pumps and things like that and set up the temporary flood barrier, and then the water may or may not touch it. And then we have all the cleanup work associated directionally. That's around $200,000 without an opportunity cost of the work that's not being done around the city. So does that kind of help? Okay.
Yep, that's good. Yeah. And I mean, you know, understanding of perpetual cost that's always there and hopefully finding ways in which, you know, we can we can minimize that again, all around being conscious of the taxpayers. And so I too hope that we, you know, aggressively go after, you know, the phase one projects and those those where we get the high return on our investment. Hopefully, we can, you know, be pretty strategic with some of the things coming coming down the federal pipeline and maybe some of these other avenues for leverage that we have towards towards some sharing with some of the more recent information we've received, get working on, you know, how might we tackle phase two? And if there's opportunities to, you know, share in some of these costs and not miss opportunities that may have been missed many years ago. And so I thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Alderman Jobin. Your Honor.
No, can I say something, please?
Let her move. Hang on, we'll get to you.
Oh, okay.
Alderman Lee, go ahead.
Okay. Having lived with the river and in the river, upriver from Davenport, and having background in river management and river ecology, I am pleased to see this roadmap. I think that HR Green did a really good job in setting out a strategic approach that the city can choose to take step by step. I'm also very pleased that the city of Davenport finally decided to look at the management of our riverfront, starting with the fundamental needs, which is how are we going to live with the river? And what can we do to make that relationship more harmonious while still being cost-effective? So I really do appreciate, I think we really do need to do those underground things. It's important to do it anyway. Raising a road or two at an intersection, I think is very helpful. How we move forward, that's going to be a long-term question. Again, this is a roadmap, and as we implement some of these fundamental projects, we're going to see as floods come in, how they work. And we're going to adapt to future floods based on what some of these early projects that we have in front of us do for us, recognizing that we may not get a flood for a while and we may have a flood every year. We don't know. That's the unknown, but we still have to move forward. This is a science-based study. It's not a landscape architect study. It's not a recreational study. It's what we needed to do first before we do a lot of those others, which is why those other projects, those other studies are still on the shelf. They may come up later, but we needed to do the science-based study first. So I appreciate the work that's been done. I appreciate the staff work. I was very hard to understand this this plan as it's adopted over time. I appreciate staff helping me understand that and listening to some of my concerns and building them in as appropriate. So I'm supportive of this as in terms of accepting it and seeing it as a roadmap moving forward. It is, in my opinion, a big deal. So thank you very much, and I believe it can be cost-effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Your Honor.
Thank you for letting me speak. So just themes and thoughts, mitigation system. Thank you, HR Green and staff for working this. Big thing is historic because a lot of people have talked about it in this council and this staff and in working with a consultant of the level of HR Green is making this happen. So history is happening here. You took this on and you dealt with it. Some of the operational improvements, when we do floods, all all hands on deck, and we don't do anything else. So that will help improve that. But historic, commerce stays open, comprehensive, balanced, phased, equitable along the entire nine miles of the riverfront. Because we remember. Because we remember, yes, we talked about the dike break here, but the West End floods at 13 feet, right? So, and 18 is where we talk about River Drive. So there's so many different pieces. This incorporates it all. It connects the dots. It puts the plan together, gives us a roadmap how to move forward. And again, historic, comprehensive, balanced plan, and I hope everybody supports it. Thank you, everyone that's worked, and we'll continue to work on it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Your Honor. Anyone else?
I mean, you know, I said on that consulting, or on the task force that picked them, and, you know, everybody looked good up and down the line. But what I found most important is why I picked them, and I think everybody else picked them, is how they were going to address this issue with the public. And I think they hit the nail on the head. You know what? We had asked for fair and equitable all the way up and down the riverfront, nine miles of riverfront. And this plan does that, right? You know, I hear about road raises and everything else, but a big chunk of phase one is things down in the west side of Davenport that I have been advocating since 1993. So I am very excited to see this plan move forward. And, but I really want to, I really want to thank staff for all their hard work because, you know, quite honestly, H.R. Green did the study, but, you know, a lot of the lake work was done by our staff, engineering staff, public work staff, along with all the other jobs that we, you know, we kind of threw this at them, right? And all the other jobs that they had to get done. So I want to thank them for that. And then we had COVID and de-ray show and everything else. So I'm just glad it all came together, and I want to thank you guys. Moving on. Item number three is a resolution approving the adoption, approving and adopting preliminary plans and specifications and plaits and schedules for the FY 2022 Alley Resurfacing Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution accepting the agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the Urban State Traffic Engineering Program project for the new traffic signals at the intersection of Brady Street and Lombard Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Moving right along now. Item number five is a resolution approving the plan specification form a contract and estimated cost for the Division Street, 76th Street to Research Parkway Improvement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to Federal Recreational Trails Program for grant assistance with the construction of the Nahat Marsh Trail System. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number seven is a motion approving change order number one to CDMI Concrete Contractors of Port Byer in Illinois in the amount of $62,000 for the Eastern Avenue Resurfacing Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Doorman, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I move to place item number one on the discussion agenda, all other items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The agenda is set and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. The next area and last area is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will lead that. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. We also have seven items on our agenda. And if I may, as I welcome Alderman Cornet to the Finance Committee. I want to assure you that we're going to handle this with the respect that this council deserves. I don't know what the Dunn brothers are up to down there, but I don't know how you expect me to keep a straight face every time I look down there. I didn't know we were having a look-alike contest tonight.
I finally got him trained.
So I apologize. Number one on the finance agenda is a first consideration ordinance amending Chapter 2.04 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled Precincts and Wards to Establish Precinct and Ward Boundaries Based Upon the 2020 Census. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting the amended 2021, 2022 year two of three AmeriCorps program grant from the Corporation for National and Community Services in the amount of $598,853 in authorizing the finance director or designee to sign the grant agreement to be managed and implemented by the Davenport Parks and Recreation Department. And before I open this item up for comment, I believe we're going to invite our Parks Director Chad Dyson to come up and highlight this great arrangement that we're all proud of. It's good to see you.
Thank you. It's good to be back. Chad Dyson, Parks and Rec Director, thank you for the opportunity to talk about this great program. We have been administering and been a recipient of this grant for approximately 14 years. It provides roughly 90 positions, AmeriCorps positions in the community, and that equates to around 80,000 hours of community service that the city receives. And not only just the city, the community, the Davenport Community School District, Stepping Stones, the Putnam, Freight House, Farmers Market, Big Brothers, Big Sisters all receive AmeriCorps positions. So it's really a community-wide asset and provides a lot of service and opportunities for everyone involved. So, thank you.
Is there any public? Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Sorry, I didn't know what you meant. Mayor.
Sorry, Mr. Condon. I have to work on my communication skills. So I just want to add on what the Parks Director said. We have witnessed, and I have personally witnessed, the work that the program managers do and the youth that is involved in all the different places, like Annie Whitmire, et cetera, Junior Theater, and they had an awards thing, and the amount of people that are involved that do work in the city in different places, and the benefit that they get out of it and move on and experience, you know, is just amazing. So I just want to add a little bit to what Mr. Dyson said, because this is something people don't talk about, but it is an amazing program for the city and for the youth and for the people that are involved, and I appreciate everybody's support in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. That item will move on. Number four is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2021 City Street Finance Report from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021 to be submitted to the Iowa Department of Transportation. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Oh, I'm sorry, I scribbled past it. May I come back to three? Okay, so we're on item number four right now, and seeing as no one is making comment, I'm going to suggest that that item moves on. And if you stick with me, we're going to now circle back to item number three, a resolution amending the North Urban Renewal Plan. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Alderman Doorman.
I just want to point out real quick that the Dunn bros down here don't have these issues.
Item number five is a resolution approving the renewal of the cyber insurance for CY 2022 with underwriters at Lloyds of London in the amount of $141,652.50. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? That item will move on. And finally, item number seven is a motion approving... Did I do it again? I made, all right, Alderman Doorman made me laugh, and I'm crashing and burning.
Humor's a good thing tonight.
I apologize. Number five is a resolution awarding the contract for the purchase of specific and aggregate stop-loss insurance to Real Lastar Life Insurance Company Voya Financial in the amount of $977,721. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? That item will move on. Skipping ahead to number seven. Motion approving the submission of the City of Davenport Annual Urban Renewal Report for Fiscal Year 2021. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, next we have purchases of $10,000 to $50,000, which are listed below on your agenda. We don't read each of those out loud, but they are listed here for your information. Alderman Cornet, that's how it's done. Would you please set my agenda?
I move to put all items on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that concludes finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Brian. You got the order, I assume, so, you know. Very good. All right, let me focus now. Are there any other ordinances, motions, or resolutions? There are none for this evening. Is there any public with business? If there is, please come to the podium, microphones above you, let us know your name, ward or address. If not here, we'd love to know where you are, and please, five minutes. Thank you.
Dale Gilmore, Sixth Ward. Welcome, Alderman Cornet. Two thank yous. The first one, thanks to the city of Davenport for taking me up on my offer of the two trees. I mean, I haven't been down, but I'll be down Friday night to look at the lighting of the first one and the second one. I don't know where the second one went. And the second thank you is to Alderman McGinnis. That tour of the Capitol Theater and the Call Building was awesome. I mean, anybody that missed out on that, you know, 50 years ago when I went to the Call and you see this stuff, and oh, yeah, that's kind of neat, but, and then you go back 50 years later and you say, wow, this is really awesome. And the work that Chris Ailes does, he brought us into one room that was probably 20 by 30 roughly, and he said it had a drop ceiling, and they took the drop ceiling down, had this dome ceiling. And he said, what, there was two guys worked eight months on redoing this ceiling in a 20 by 30 room? I mean, I don't know where he gets his money, but I'm glad he spends it with us, so, thank you.
Anyone else?
I wish I could have made that. Sounds wonderful. Thanks for setting it up, Councilman. Just about another item of thanks, you may have remembered, some few meetings ago, I've raised a question about the library downtown having some problem with its, the automatic door openers, the push being quite hard. I was down at the library last week, and they're fixed, it's fixed. So, you know, you're encouraging me, so that could have been a very dangerous thing to do. So, but thanks whoever did it. Many of you know Michael Blazer, our local artist and maritime artist, artist of historic riverfronts in the US riverfronts and steamboats, quite talented individual, lives in Bettendorf, about my age, I guess. But I paid a visit to he and his wife a week and a half ago and purchased a lithograph, I mean, a print of one of his lithographs, which is the view of downtown Davenport, the fall of 1941, 80 years ago this fall, from the Overlook, the historic mansion on the Gold Coast. And it shows the brand-new Centennial Bridge. It shows our historic, original courthouse. It shows many of the buildings, the Adler, the Davenport Bank Building and others that are so much a part of our current downtown Davenport, but also many of the ones that we've lost. And many of those were the real small, little background buildings, the two and three and four-story buildings that were maybe 25 or 30 feet wide. You know, a number of those put together made our downtown. And I could just tell you about the time, 80 years had passed. At that time, of course, they still had a few electric streetcars, still had buses running it, probably, I think 15, maybe at worst, 20-minute headways. So you could sit down and, on the average, you'd be waiting maybe seven minutes for a bus, entirely different world than what we have right now. At that same time, you know, of course, we've got Kaiser, Kaiser's War in our sister city in Germany, and of course, 1941, that same time, they were engaged in a war. We hadn't been engaged at that point. They hadn't suffered probably in their homeland like they would within four years. And my guess is Kaiser's War, I don't know, you know, their actual experience, but they probably suffered very tremendously from that war. And it's so funny, because somebody said at one point to me that, really, downtown Davenport, Davenport was founded by Germans. Essentially, what they did was create a German town, a German city here in the New World. And so at that point, they had an intact downtown, and we had an intact downtown. The war that they suffered in the next four years, of course, it's since rebuilt, the war we had was the automobile against our downtown and the need for parking and the fact that a lot of folks don't have the kind of love of historic buildings, and we don't really care to build things of the kind of quality that you can expect to last for hundreds of years like they did in Germany. So they rebuilt, and we tore down. And I think if our friends that come visit us from Germany, they're gracious and everything, and they like what they see, but I think in their hearts, they kind of look at us and they say, wow, look at what they've lost, how impoverished their life is, because they're downtown, although they have a lot of good buildings, a few of them, much of it is parking lots. And we don't have a way of getting back the downtown we had in 1941, or even 1951 when I was born, or even 61 when I was a young kid. So I just wanted to raise that issue, just to kind of have you all think about, you know, how do we go about it in the future? I mean, in the past, I've talked about the downtown plan that the partnership put together, and it shows an entire block, the block of our former Washington Square with the Y. And myself, I would like to see Washington Square at least get partially reconstituted. I'd like to see that Y building perhaps be preserved, because there aren't that many buildings from the 60s that are of the good quality. Anyway, that was my thought. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, anything else, Miss Beagle? Nope, all right. Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a great weekend. Come to the tree Friday, 6:00. Have a good day.